Got it.
Can you hear me? I can't hear anybody yet.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, we're just had just a minor technical problem, but I think we're just about there. Mayor, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you if you guys can hear me.
Yeah, yes. And then Greg Curtis is joining us. We just had to resend the link to him. Looks like Brian and Chantel are here, so. Anyway, just give give us a couple of minutes.
Do we know if is Ellen going to join us?
I don't know. I was assuming she was, but she may not. There's Doug.
There's Doug. So do we want to wait for Greg or should we get started, Tim?
I think we we can get started. Let me make sure. Brian, can you hear us? Brian and Chantel?
No problem at all. We can hear you beautifully.
Okay, I think we can start, Mayor.
Okay, okay. Well, welcome. Welcome, everybody. This is the Cottonwood Heights City Council Legislative Work Session. And today's Thursday, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We're excited to have our lobbyists, Brian Allen and Chantel Nate, and then Greg Curtis as well with us on our on this Zoom meeting. So before we get started, I'm gonna well, I'm actually gonna turn some time over to Tim before we get to our lobbyists. So, Tim.
Okay, thanks. I just want to give you a brief overview of what's been happening, and this this will be very brief, and I think all of you are aware. We give you weekly updates in the council communication. But are we really been focused on a lot of different bills, working with the Utah League of Cities and Towns? Mayor, Councilmember Newell and myself have been going to the weekly ULCT Legislative Policy Committee meetings. There's been a lot of discussion on what's happening related to things, but our focus really always along with the league is focusing on advocating for respect of the traditional role of local government, recognizing that every city is unique and that there's not a one size fits all. And then the issue of not imposing unfunded mandates on cities. That's kind of what drives a lot of our thought processes and the league's work as well and advocacy. So anyway, we've been doing that. We've been focusing a lot on a lot of different bills, but there are some land use bills that are out right now, and the good thing with that is knock on wood that there has not been much of the preemption of local control. But there are a lot of bills that could promote unfunded mandates. In fact, the league commented that there are bills that would impose probably around its estimated fifty-five million on city governments throughout the state if the bills pass. So there's a lot of work to try to advocate against some of those things. So anyway, that's that's just a little bit of an overview. We will continue to provide weekly updates on our LPC meetings in the council communications. And if it's okay, Mayor, I'm gonna start and turn it over to Brian and Chantel, and then we'll give Greg some time. Does that work, Mayor?
Yeah, that sounds great. One last thing, were we expecting Sean at all?
I I thought so, but I I'm not sure. I will text him and see if he's planning on joining, so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, let's turn it over.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So just some, you know, late breaking updates. House Bill two ninety-one, which is Representative Musselman's short term rental bill, passed out of committee last night. We met with Musselman for about a half an hour yesterday before the committee talked to him a lot about his bill. And one of the things that he stressed very much in his presentation on the bill and stressed to us is that I'm not doing anything in here that would would usurp local authority. He says, I think every community needs to determine what's right for their community. He says, the pilot, the way the pilot, it's a pilot program for short term rentals, and it would create amnesty. So you get all the ones that are currently not in compliance in compliance without penalty. His current version of the bill talks about eighty percent of the zone, but he's actually considering going to a percentage of housing stocks, like five percent of your housing stock could, you know, that would be the sort of the minimum that you'd have to allow that many licenses for short term rentals. That that has some appeal because eighty percent of your zones is a lot. That could be a lot, a big number. If you have a sort of a minimum cap, then that obviously a city could exceed if they wanted to. But they would have to at least allow for, you know, like, I don't know what the percentage would be. He was thinking around five percent, but I think he's just kicking things around. He's still waiting for data from several several cities and organizations to figure out what that number should be, but that might be a better solution because you can then you kind of sort of have finite number that, you know, you need you to work with. And then he does have a transient room tax in there to help pay for the enforcement of those. So he's yeah, he's very open to ideas. So if there's anything that.
Brian, may I interrupt on that? Because we've been looking and giving input on that. This this bill allows for cities to enter into a pilot program. So you don't have to enter that, enter into that. But if you do, you have the option of charging the one point five percent tax on those to cover costs that you have administrative costs related to that. But cities don't have to to join into that pilot program as well. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't make that clear. But yeah, it's an opt-in.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So I mean, just to put that in perspective, I believe we've got about thirteen thousand units in Cottonwood Heights. So that's roughly five hundred twenty-five, five hundred and fifty permitted short term rentals if we were in that program. Is that?
Well, if 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 that percentage passes, I don't know if that's where that's at. He that's what he's what's where he's leaning. And, you know, we I told him, you know, that we'd have to run it by, you know, obviously, we see the language and run it by the city before we could comment on whether or not it would be a better option than the eighty twenty. I says, it feels like it would be, but we'd have to see it to know for sure.
Yeah, I think I think a percentage of housing stock is better. I don't know. The five is the right number, but I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know. It was a minimum number, and then obviously, if the city wanted to do more, they could. You can always you can always make it more accessible, not less. So I don't know. I don't even I I have no idea how many short term rentals we even have in the city right now. Maybe we don't know for sure because there's illegal ones.
Well, and and let me, if I may comment on that, the with the pilot program, a lot of it is focused on if if communities are trying to promote tourism, that pilot program works quite well. If communities are having challenges with short term rentals, it may not be a good fit to have to have be a part of this pilot program because of the amount of issues that maybe cities already have. We have around a hundred, and Mike Johnson can correct me if I'm wrong, a hundred licensed short term rentals in our city right now. But those are the ones that we know about that have come in legally. There may be many others, as you said, Councilmember Bracken.
Oh, there are a lot of others.
Yeah.
So is the the five percent tied?
That's a that's a ballpark number. So that's just no tied to that number.
So, okay, but so are they determining that? Would we just only be able to determine that by the the number and not location? Or could we still tie that five percent or whatever number it ends up being to to specific locations?
Well, I I think I think you still would have some opportunity to provide local control on where they're located. And so it wouldn't you wouldn't necessarily have to say eighty percent of your zones. You could pick the zones as long as you have the number of licenses available. I think that's what he was looking at. But like I said, I haven't seen the language on that yet, so I don't know for sure how that's going to. I don't he did when I talked to him about would that be allowed? Would we have to allow him every zone? He goes, no, you still have some local control over that. So I'm waiting to see what that looks like. I don't know. That's his original intent is not to impose that on on the cities. So and then and that that bill did pass out of committee, but there's still going to be some work done, and so we'll keep you posted. And Tim, you asked about two bills, House Bill two seventy-six, which is Lyman's Water Bill, and it really applies to cities that have municipal water system and they contract users in. I don't know how to. I don't think it really impacts the city because we don't have our own municipal water system, but I will tell you it was held in committee. It's not going anywhere. The other one that you asked about was House Bill three oh one, the transportation tax. And that bill is in the Senate. It passed out of the House. It passed with fifty-six yes votes. So it's got pretty broad support. In that instance, it would it it does change the gas tax calculation a little bit. It also adds a twelve and a half percent tax on charging stations for electric vehicles. Right now, electric vehicles aren't paying any tax to help fund the roads and the the thought there is that it it they should be paying something. So they're going to add this tax at the at the charging station. It ultimately, it probably averages out about a little bit, maybe three dollars and change per charge. And I can tell you that if you have a fifteen gallon tank, it's about four dollars and change to in gas tax to fill your car. So it's comparable. It's a little bit less than you pay on a gasoline powered car, but it's a way for the state to recoup some money from electric vehicles that they would normally have gotten if they were, you know, gas powered vehicles. So they're just trying to figure out a way to keep the road funding going as more and more people transition to to EVs. So that has broad support. It's going to pass. I'm sure it's in the Senate. And like I said, there was fifty-six yes votes in the House, and that's not even close. So I think it's headed that way.
The thing to remember on this one, Brian, is sorry, is this is not a tax if they're charging at home. This is only charging stations. They're trying to capture people who especially who were traveling through our state versus people who are going home and charging every 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 night. So and we do we don't even do we have any public charging stations other than where the people are being charged within Cottonwood Heights, Tim?
Well, we have a we have here at city, no, none that are being charged that I'm aware of. We have some here at City Hall, obviously, but and there's some, I think, scattered.
Are the ones the ones at City Hall free to people for people to use?
They are.
Yeah. So there's no tax on those. It's just the paid charging stations. So yeah, if you're plugging in a home and and I know Chantel's got a Tesla, and I think the last time she used a charging station was a couple of months ago. So I mean, just people don't. I don't know how often people actually use them. It's more for people who are using their car, you know, on longer trips where they have to stop and do the supercharge. So that that one is moving. There are a number of land use bills, Tim, as you mentioned. The Affordable Housing Bill by Representative White, who is actually just one of the nicest people I've ever met. He's such a nice guy, but it it passed out of committee and is on the House Third Reading Calendar, and it is it was supported by the league. There was a lot of work done behind the scenes to get that in a good place, and that seems to be holding together well. There is Fillmore's SB one seventy-four that also has passed out of committee, and that one had a lot of league negotiation. And it is, I think it's in an okay place right now. There may be some changes coming. I've heard maybe just minor things, but that looks to be going pretty well. There's another bill, House Bill one ninety-six on eminent domain that would restrict a city's ability to use eminent domain to build a park that has been assigned to a committee but not yet heard. So not sure what the appetite will be for that one long term. And and, you know, Representative Benyon had a short term rental bill. It has not been drafted yet. I don't think it's going to go anywhere. I think everyone's looking at Musselman's bill to be kind of the answer on short term rentals this year. So that one's not going anywhere. There are also a number of retirement bills. There's one that on a firefighter retirement bill that expanded, you know, who could be eligible for the retirement system. And that one has passed both houses. There are a whole bunch of other public safety retirement bills that have been drafted but are still in rules. There's a whole lot of negotiation going on on those, and and I think they're trying to get to a place where there's maybe just one bill that runs. But I know that I've talked with Spada Fours who work on, you know, on a lot of law enforcement issues and others. And there's a whole lot of back and forth going on right now with those, and I'm not sure where they're going to end up, but they're still in roles, and so there's still a lot of negotiation happening there. And then House Bill three seventy-four, you may have some interest in, is the bill that would dissolve the UPD. It was substituted and passed out of committee last, you know, yesterday. And it it was like a nine to four vote, so it was it was pretty much along party lines. That bill is likely to pass.
So so what's the the purpose of that? I I I again, because that that will affect us. There are multiple jurisdictions right here that are that that obviously are involved with UPD and Holiday and the canyons. And so 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 what is what? Why? Why are they doing this? Is there a purpose?
The the function, the what's happening is you've got two, you know, the way they're viewing it is you have two entities that are providing the same service. You have the Salt Lake County Sheriff's Office and UPD. So there's two separate bureaucracies and what the bill sponsor has talked about and what Sheriff Veras talked about is they would just convert those UPD contracts to interlocal agreements between the sheriff's office and the municipality or entity that was using them. So I don't think it really functionally changes anything. It changes the administrative structure, but it doesn't really. I don't think it changes anything on the ground necessarily. I think they would have interlocal agreements in place that would just serve the same purpose that the UPD contract served. So so Brian, that would take care of the canyons, right? Correct? It was part of unincorporated county anyway, right? I think that county would still have responsibility for those no matter what happens. But people like Holiday where they have their, you know, they have the unified PD. They would then opt. They can either opt to create their own police department, or they can opt to contract with the county for services. I think most of the ones that are in the UPD right now, if they were, if if this were to move forward, would probably just continue to contract with the county on a interlocal agreement level, which is where the legislature at this point in time seems to think it makes more sense to be. So this doesn't surprise me at all. When Cottonwood Heights left UPD years ago, I told Sheriff Winter then, I says, you know, this is not going to be sustainable over time as more cities leave. And and I think what they found is that the administrative burden for taxpayers, they the legislature feels like it's just unnecessary at this point that the sheriff's office could handle it. It's small enough now with, you know, more cities leaving that it just makes more sense to do interlocal agreements than have a separate entity.
I know that in the newspaper, they they were talking to the sponsor, and there was also some concerns that the general county funds were being used to subsidize the UPD administrative costs. Some of the things were in there, and there was so there was kind of a double taxation with yeah, into the county fund and having some of that go to UPD where it shouldn't. And so they draw a clear line between.
Yeah, there's the extra expense of two administrations just didn't it did not make sense. So that's kind of where they're at, and that one's probably going to go. Other than that, I mean, there are a whole bunch of other law enforcement bills that we we've talked about, but they've they're all being managed pretty well with league support and law enforcement support, and there's nothing out there right now that looks like it's hurtful. So.
Great. May I may I bring up one more thing real quickly, just and Mayor, you're aware of this, and I think maybe the rest of the council. The league is spending a lot of time negotiating right now on a bill. Well, it's I don't think it's been formulated into a bill, but it's on road design standards to have a standardized across the whole state width of pavement on all residential roads at twenty-five feet. And so we in the LPC, Mayor and I and Councilmember Newell spent a lot of time in that meeting talking about the concerns with that on a one size fits all. And so that's being negotiated. It'll be interesting to see where that goes. Matt Ship was in some meetings yesterday with with statewide engineers that are still really concerned about that bill or about that potential bill. So we'll see what happens with that.
Yeah, there's language on that yet at all. It's just it's still in the ethereal stage, so we haven't seen anything to to really work on other than just share our concern about the the road. I said, I mean, I explained to him, I said, you know, you you want us to do short term rentals, and we have parking issues now, and now you want to make the road smaller to create more parking issues, and it just doesn't make sense. So.
Is there any updates? I know we haven't seen anything on limited infrastructure districts, the Lids, but I'm surprised that that hasn't have a bill yet with you know, the 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 state's support from the governor and and leadership yet. Have we heard anything?
Support on that is waning. I think when the league and others have pointed out to leadership that you know, when the news media gets a hold of the fact that you want to grant, you know, developers sovereign power to, you know, use eminent domain and other things you don't even like the cities using, that's going to raise some eyebrows. And I think the optics on it are just I don't know how to even manage it. I think they're stepping away from the concept a little bit right now. I don't I don't know that we'll. I mean, we may see something. But it's not going to be, I think, quite as. I mean, when I know that when the governor's office had asked about it, they were like, what? We said, what? We agreed to what? And like, when they started thinking about, they realized the optics wasn't great. So I don't know. I mean, it's gonna be interesting to see what comes out of that. There's still a lot of talk. And I think they want to do something, but it may be. It may be. Look, it's going to look a lot different, I think, than the original proposal. They're still trying to figure out a way to help them access the 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 bond market, but even that is starting to raise some eyebrows among some legislators, like, why would we allow this one group to do it? We don't allow every other business to do it. And so there's a lot of angst about that bill. They don't. They don't have a place of consensus at all yet.
Tim, Sean is online. You may want to.
Yes, I I he just texted me and and yeah, he's here. He's just not able to get in. And so we're working on that right now, but he is in the meeting listening. So.
That's all we've got. So let Greg tell you better stories.
Okay.
Greg's gonna tell us how we're going to get all this money, right, Greg?
Yeah. Possibly. Okay. I want to cover three things really quick, three areas of emphasis. The first is is the governor's trail paved trail program that he announced last, I think, late last summer with Carlos and UDOT. That is going to receive some significant ongoing funding. I'm guessing probably in the range of twenty-five to thirty million dollars a year, and these are for paved paved trails connecting, you know, communities, et cetera, wouldn't necessarily be the Bonneville Shoreline Trail unless it came down and was in a in a paved area. But UDOT, the legislature is trying to not, they're trying to move away from picking projects. Some people say their complaint is is it's, you know, those with political clout get something, and there's not a a waiting process. So UDOT will receive that money and start a prioritization or start a process whereby there'll be applications working with West Edge Front and MAG as well as other MPOs and counties across the state. I think the perception is is it is primarily an urban issue. I don't believe the rural legislators feel like there's going to be paved trails connecting Parowan and Paragona. You know, if you want to get to Paragona, you probably just walk alongside of the road and hope that that one car that passes you doesn't run you over. So.
Isn't the Bonneville Shoreline Trail paved? Isn't that the concept of that paved?
I know I don't believe so. Up on the on the hillside and stuff, I don't think that will ever be paved. So but I think.
You know, it's just it's just a road. It's a base kind of a thing. It's not paved that I know of.
Yeah. And but it but there would be areas. So for example, or the Bonneville Shoreline Trail might turn and come down and connect across roadways. For example, if you follow the Bonneville far enough east or not east, north along the East Bench, when you get up to those bridges that are crossing I eighty and two fifteen and such there. Those would be eligible, as I understand the program. Okay, and saying building infrastructure that would connect or building underpasses that would connect or building paved trails. I think there's some anticipation that they'll try and work with areas that have right of way that may not be used. I mean, one of the big issues has been, for example, in I know in Sandy at about tenth east, they have some paved trails that run alongside of canals, and it's going to take a lot of effort working with, you know, some canal companies and others as to how much traffic do they want? You know, pedestrian or non motorized vehicle traffic along canals and the liability associated with that. But but UDOT, the long and short of that is UDOT is going to receive a significant amount of money, and there will be a significant, you know, when you start thinking about thirty million dollars a year, the bill going through right now is Senate Bill one. Senator Harper's one eighty-five, and it actually captures point zero five percent of the TIF, which should actually currently be about forty-five million. The general discussion is that will come down from there. Won't be quite that high.
Hey, Greg, quick question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I was gonna say, does that have the end date on the the timeframe on how how that goes forward as far as the how many years they they will do that or not?
No, it doesn't. And it statutorily earmarks that money, and so it 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 moves forward and stays in that program until the statute changed and pulls it out. So you know, they're calling it the ATIF, the Active Transportation Investment Fund. So in that you have the TIF, the TIF, which is the Transportation Investment Fund that flows in for capacity roads. They took, they created a subsection of that that captured some growth and created the TTIF. Now they're creating, this is the ATIF, the Active Transportation Fund. And it would just move forward and create its own program. And so I think ultimately, in the long run, I mean, the process with UDOT, I think it'll be beneficial along in the urban areas mostly connecting cities and trying to locate and find a right of way to do that. So the idea is just so that people can have mobility with new modes of transportation, electric bikes, scooters, all sorts of things where they're not interacting with traffic as much. There's a lot of people that would be comfortable in taking a bike, you know, two or three miles to go go someplace except for the interacting with traffic, which is can be a harrowing experience on a bike. So that's that's the goal and the vision, and it's got, I think it's got broad support to receive that. But they're they're not going to be identifying projects in that. They they're the legislature is getting very stingy in regards to identifying projects and saying, no, we're going to give it to UDOT. And they'll be and working with MAG and West Edge Front, there'll be an application and a prioritization process. And so that will be and right now, it's not really stood up at all because they have this is initiation of a brand new program. So be involved in working with UDOT on rulemaking process and prioritization. Don't know if they'll create a subsection of the Transportation Commission or if they'll just ask them to start doing double duty, but you know, we'll create a ranking process. Second area I wanted to briefly cover is is there's discussion. It didn't talk about opening up the Cottonwood Canyons Transportation Fund. It has twenty million dollars a year going into the fund, but it has to be appropriated by the legislature to use, and UDOT is seeking or is talking about getting legislative permission to start using some of that for the initial phases of what was the phased approach or now the common sense solution depending upon the advocates, you know, in talking any in talking with some of the environmental advocates and the change in name, but but essentially saying, all right, can we start with increased transit? Can we start with perhaps tolling? And some of those first things that they've identified in the environmental document or in the preliminary environmental document, they're still waiting on the final record of decision on regards to that and and where that goes. But but I think there's broad consensus on some of those initial steps in the phased or common sense with the what they're referring to as the common sense solution. And so so I think we should see more efforts with transit surrounding the canyons and and opening up that fund to help move money towards that. Lastly, I wanted to talk about the local funding for roads. Strategically, and this may have been a mistake or not, but a couple of years ago, a lot of the funding that we've received in the past, municipalities have received in the past have come from what's called the county, the first class restricted fund. And that fund is a portion of this, the dedicated sales taxes for transit. Well, strategically, a couple of years ago, there was close, there was a lot. Well, strategically, a couple of years ago, there was close, there was a lot, it's, it's had bonded indebtedness. It's been paid off and moved forward over the years. Um, a couple of years ago, the legislature went through and said, look, we have. What amounts to twelve million dollars. And rather than pick winners or losers, they went through and with all of the municipalities. They said, okay, for the next fifteen years, you're going to receive, and it's written right in statute, you're going to receive X number of dollars. Okay, um, and I can't remember, Tim, it'd have to correct me. Tim, I don't remember if Cottonwood Heights was receiving four or five hundred thousand dollars a year, um, moving forward. And then, and not that that really matters, but the, the challenge is, is, is with that twelve million dollar commitment for fifteen years. That fund has been fairly tapped. It doesn't have a whole lot of money in it right now. And it's just, and it's flowing to the cities, um, in that formulaic or statutory, uh, approach. Uh, so, um, the legislature is, a leadership, um, has. Is being very, very stingy and saying, we are getting more and more requests for appropriations or RFAs. For local projects, be it water, uh, local airports, local roads. And they are kind of drawing back and saying, they're not being very receptive this year. Okay. And they're pointing to somewhat saying, look, we spent, we gave out all this quarter, the quarter money that's still flowing. You know, what's going on with that? And so that's kind of the reality of where we're sitting right now. So I think the, uh, upside is, is there should be some state trail money coming with the new state trail system. Um, but as far as the roads, uh, they're, they're pulling back and saying, you know, especially in Salt Lake County. Saying, what are you doing if you're twelve million dollars a year that's being distributed? Cause the legislature for years, uh, on the quarter, the quarter fund would create lists. And, and there were some that felt that that was creating winners and losers. And so now it's kind of formulaic and it's just, in that bill being laid out.
May, Greg, or mayor, may I comment on that real quick? So if I recall, when that was established, you, you could either take the funds as a community, which is what we are doing on a yearly basis. Or you could go into a bonding element with UDOT, using those funds as, as part of that. And, and we opted just to collect those funds. But, but the bottom line is those funds will still be there for a number of years. They're just saying that all these additional requests, you've already got the twelve million or whatever that's going towards cities. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. See, so a lot of those funds, so when they did the, when they put that money out there, then they out, they, they put money in the state infrastructure bank. They put thirty million dollars in there and said, hey, if you wanna borrow, you know, not even necessar- I, I'd call it the debt market, but rather than the bond. Because the state infrastructure bank is a little easier to get, you know, but they said, here's thirty million dollars. If you wanna capitalize your revenue for the next fifteen years and build some projects, you know. And, and so for hypothetically, if a city was saving five million dollars a year, that's seven and a half million dol- or five hundred thousand here. That's seven and a half million dollars minus out your cost of capitalization, you know, at the time, two years ago was very nominal. And saying, hey, you can go do a six and a half million dollar project, or you can do two, three million dollar projects, or you can figure out, do that. Um, most cities, most cities just said, oh, we'll just take the revenue and, and however they're using it. And I think, uh, probably during the interim, we're gonna have to work with several of the cities. Some of the frustration that's been voiced privately to me is, is. It, it looks like it just kind of got moved in for a general fund budget supplanting or, you know. Make, so it makes sense. I mean, I think they were anticipating capital projects and it might be paying for, uh. Maintenance or pothole filling or, you know, and, and all legitimate expenses, but I don't know if that's what they envisioned. But that's kind of the status where things are at right now in regards to that. There is, in regards to the quarter, the county, the first class restricted fund, there is some debt that is being paid off in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And there will be, so then there will be, the fund overall, uh, generates the sales tax, generates about. Uh, thirty million dollars a year. So when they pay off some debt in fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, there should be some large chunks of money. And then the legislature will then decide, all right, do we, do we distribute it again in a, in this formulaic way? Do we go back to, uh, the winners and losers, which, uh. Some cities were better winners than others and those that weren't, uh, certainly voiced their frustration, you know, in regards to that. And that's why they tried this formulaic approach, but that's, that's the discussion going on regards to that fund right now. There, oh, and lastly, I would say, there is a, the fifth quarter was authorized five years ago, six years ago now. Um, at fifth, and we call it a fifth of a fifth, because it wasn't a whole quarter. They authorized the county to impose a point two. For transit projects. Um, the county has never done that. And so there's been, there was a lot of discussion during the interim and the U, UEO, UOESC or whatever that working group. That the governor and the speaker, the president worked with, and then the subcommittee, Senator Colomore worked with Representative Schultz on their subcommittee. And there was a lot of discussion about changing that. Uh, um, there's discussion about. Changing the uses. Salt Lake County wants to change point oh five to allow them to be, to use that for, uh. Homeless and transitional services for those having housing instability and crisis. And the services associated with that often, uh, mental health treatment, et cetera, uh, maybe drug treatment. The Salt Lake County wants point oh five there. There's been discussion about allowing the cities to get point oh five that would flow directly to them. Um, like the fourth quarter when the cities receive point one, uh, and then, then point one going into transit. Um, there's. Yeah. So there's, there's different bills. Some of them just extend the date and allow us, make it stay just for transit. There's ones that just go to county. Uh, there's one and point oh five homeless to the county. And one five to transit, transit. Um, there's pushback, uh, generally. As one member of leadership put it, said, well, we're not sure, we wanna really make it easier for the county to impose this tax. Because we're up here trying to cut taxes and you're saying, hey, give us an avenue to make it easier to impose taxes. And raise taxes. And so there's a lot of discussion. It's kind of late in the session. But all of these funding, these big funding bills will be decided late in the session. So that's the, uh, last item of discussion as to whether or not now, and all they're talking about is, is the author, changing the authorization and the uses. It would still have to be imposed by the county, whatever they, you know, whatever they change it to. And so, um. Mayor Wilson felt confident that if it was, if she had a portion going towards homelessness, she could get some bipartisan support. To impose it. And that's why she was asking for point oh five. Um. But there's, you know, that's, that's where that's at.
Well, thank you, Greg. Is there, uh, any other questions from the council? Anyone for, for Greg, Brian or? Chantel?
Mayor, can I just make a comment, just for the records? Councilmember Burrell just texted me and she's having some technical difficulties trying to get in and we're trying to help her. I told her the meeting is probably wrapping up, but just for the record, she's, she's trying to get in and we're trying to help her. So.
Okay. Well, this is, uh, our favorite time of year and we'll look forward to this weekly update and hope that, uh, no major surprises come at us. And, and, uh, we get more money and the, the state loves us. So there we go. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate everybody being online and, and, and we'll take a formal motion to adjourn, I guess, Tim, right? Yeah. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, Scott.
We could.
I move or second it, whichever is fir- first.
Uh, we'll take that from Scott and Doug, uh, and, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Thank you all for joining. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank Greg, Ryan and Chantel.